We have a town council meeting to order, November 21st, 2017. The Havi hearing room. WCAT will be recording and broadcasting in the future. Call to order?
Councilwoman here. Councilor Cala, President, Council Kristofus. Council LaTieri. Council Boyajin. Council Barone.
Present.
Council Delvento.
Yep.
Vice President Boncory.
Here.
President Sampin.
Here. Can we raise the pledge of allegiance? Do we have our town manager to do the pledge for us this way?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could remain standing for one moment. I would like to have a moment of silence for Anthony Mahajad. He was with the Air Force Hazards Committee for over ten years and did a lot of fine work representing the town of Winthrop with the airport. So just a moment of silence if you would. Thank you. All right, we have minutes that have been distributed from October 17th, 2017. Counsel President. Motion, press. I won't be voting on these minutes as I wish.
No, I...
We've got some extension. Do I have a...
Motion.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Has minutes had circulated?
Aye.
All right, okay. Presentations, we have Deanna Ferretta here from the Health Department. Deanna?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce Deb Goldfie, our CIT social worker who's working in the Health Department. I again made out my beloved handout and I gave him the keys to share the manual, so I'll give Deb a minute to introduce herself.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Deb Goldfie. I'm a clinical social worker. I work for Boston Medical Center and here on CIT grant through the Police Department. I'm here about ten hours a week, so part-time. Just these last few months, just sort of getting integrated into the town, getting to know the different departments and the school and the police and... But starting to do some really good work. And we gave you guys some notes in terms of data and referrals we've been getting from police, calls I've been making, collaborations, different conferences I've been going on representing Winthrop. And I know you guys have a long agenda tonight, so I'll keep it short, but my contact information is on there, so feel free to reach out if you have questions. I certainly can answer any questions now that folks might have.
Thank you for becoming part of the team. We appreciate it and all the hard work that they've been doing. Any other council or town manager? I'm sorry.
I just wanted Deanna Ferretta to stand up and just to let the council know where we stand in the state with our peer recovery coach program.
Yeah, we are the first community to have two full-time male and female peer recovery coaches on our town budget, so we're in the community in that way. So Laverne and I were able to share that at the Delio Forum, and it was very well-received, so.
First community.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're ahead of the curve and we're leading the way, and Deanna Ferretta is at the front of the line. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deanna, I appreciate all your...
If I could just add to their presentation.
Yes.
I mean, it's a huge statement to have sixty-five referrals, and that's even up from when the documents were submitted from the police. That's sixty-five less encounters with law enforcement and putting people in the right hands and connecting them to the right people to take care of their problems. So it's a significant help, and we're glad to have you on board, and I think we're proving out to the DPH that ten hours is not enough based on the volume that we're seeing, plus the interactions with the schools.
Yeah.
It's a good connection with all departments working together, so thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. Obviously, we have lots of folks here, so John Vataglia, just state your name in your free name, please, for the record.
Thank you, Councilman Vataglia. My name is Jonathan Boyajin, and I live in Precinct Five. I came tonight to pass over copies of a document that was prepared by a newly organized, densely populated organization representing densely populated residential neighborhoods in and around the Winter Center area that have shown a growing concern about the potential of the serious effect of some of the potential developments in the Winter Center area on the quality of life on the neighborhood in and around the center. I look at this document, I think it's been extraordinarily well-done. You can see, for example, the positive results of the volunteers going door-to-door in their neighborhoods. Again, densely populated, representing a significant portion of the total population of town of Winter. If I want to commend this group, it asked me to assist them in distributing this document tonight for your consideration, but also in further development of this issue, because I totally agree with their position that some of the issues, some of the potential developments that they referred to in this study, if in fact they are implemented in some place, would have a potentially very serious negative effect on the quality of life of these densely populated neighborhoods. So please allow me to give context of this. I think I have enough for all of the councilors. One, for our town manager?
I do have one.
You do have one?
Yes, thank you, John.
In that case, I really have context for all of you.
Change the heads and get passing.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, open that area too. Well, again, what I really want to say is that that is not a super trivial document. Over it extraordinarily was a completely untrue, a double check and triple check of the data that they have in there, and they informed me raised in a document well-founded, and it's something that the council has to, at least in my opinion, take into consideration as we go forward with the potential effects of all the developments. So with that, I want to thank you for your consideration. And, you know?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment? Yes?
I have a little statement I'd just like to...
Sure.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. I've been attending these meetings for about five months now, and I've listened to your folks about various subjects we've discussed in the center, how all this would work, all this work would help all our businesses. I've heard about and read all the different plans, the master plan, economic trends, five-year strategic, parking study, middle school reuse, and finally, the landscape design. And all this time, we kept asking how all this was going to help us. We wanted parking, so we were shown and told there was plenty of parking. We asked how you can include the private lots in that when you still don't have any agreements for us or our patrons to park there. You said there's plenty of parking. We said it's really not a good fit for our older clients. You told us to walk, it's good for you. Then we moved on to the landscape design meetings, which we just had. The first meeting, people overwhelmingly rejected the bumpouts that we saw. The second meeting, they had three designs, again with all the bumpouts. Not even one courtesy drawing taking the concerns of the first meeting. All we heard from the beginning of that meeting was walking and pedestrians. Not once during that whole meeting, and that was an hour and a half, did the word "business" come up. Didn't come up. Then I went back over the weekend, read some of the reports and the business plans and the master plan, and it dawned on me. I had an epiphany. This work isn't for us at all. This work is so developers can come in at taxpayer expense, mind you, one to three million dollars, and build shiny new buildings, fill an already crowded Winter with more people. This infrastructure work is for condos, not existing businesses. Can we at least drop the cover and call this what it is, the Senate Redevelopment District? This project doesn't and won't help almost all the businesses that are currently there. This construction, first and foremost, is development-driven. The attitude seems to be whoever makes it, great. If we don't, that's okay too. Build, baby, build. Meeting areas, walkways, eating out, again, never a mention of the existing businesses who've spent years building their brands. We believe this will ruin us for many others, awful money, which we always spend as fast as we get in. This is a race to the bottom. I urge the council to rethink everything in front of you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jean Coughlin. I'm a resident of Twenty-Three Cottage Park Road, Precinct Five, and we raised our family there, been there thirty years. I love my house, I love my neighborhood. I'm really concerned about what affect the buildings, which is pretty much on top of me and also across the street, on the other side of Cottage Park. So I'm scared, I'm concerned, I'm confused, and I'm wondering how no notification, no communication was ever put out to me. I never tell me I missed a meeting in July of 2014 when we were on vacation. It's no secret that I've been concerned for years. I had many conversations. Mr. Sanford also assured me when I approached him years ago about it. He was also homeowner on Somerset Ave and was as concerned as me. I guess I'm just trying to confirm if I am navigating the website, looking over the town maps, I'm trying to get an answer from people, nobody can give me the answer. It looks to me like on the map, I've been moved, my house has been moved into the Center Business District. The zoning has changed behind my house, which allows the developers to go higher. So that upsets me, it upsets me as a resident and a taxpayer for thirty years, that I feel the developers are more protected than a town resident, in this case, anyway. I'm asking for communication, I'm asking if people could be considerate, both if and when development happens. The design, the look, it's just absurd to me that they could put up three or four stories above, if you look at my little tiny house. And I've approached everyone. I mean, I've gone to the building inspector, I've gone to Mr. Ferretta himself. I'm trying to get answers and nobody seems to listen to me. I went up to the town hall today, the poor girls didn't even have a current CVD, you know, Center Business District map to give me. It's outdated up there, so I'm just saying, you know, could we be on board? I asked Joe the other night. I've gone to everybody and nobody wants to tell me I'm in the district. Looks like I am. So I just want confirmation and I want communication from the town and some consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Phyllis?
Hi, I'm Phyllis Hargreaves out of on Somerset Ave, and I know that the zoning change went through in 2014, but how was it communicated? Because none of us or very few of us seem to know about it. It seems like something that paramount would have to be mailed to or someone from the town council or someone representing that zoning change could have told people or should have been higher on the importance list or just no one knew about it. I didn't know about it till I walked down the center and saw the proposed plan in the Evangelical Church Building for twelve-plus condos and just, I don't know how I could have missed it. I read the transcript, I know things are posted in different places, but something that significant that changes the town, the center, and that close vicinity? I wonder why people weren't notified by mail or something? Or I could be way off base, I don't know. But it seems like something that important should have been conveyed, and for someone's house to be considered in the Center Business District, that's a huge change. And here's an owner that didn't know anything about it. So I'm just wondering if other plans, if they do go through, what the communication will be like? Like, will we be advised of demolition dates or construction dates or who owns it or what the plans are or some type of communication? Is there any protocol? Was there any method of communicating to residents in place already?
If that's a question, I'll try to answer it.
That's a question.
You know, there's been a few plans. One was for the old CVS building in that corner site at one time. It was brought up by a different developer, a local guy, and that was brought to the planning board and rejected because of its significance of the structure as well as the look of the structure. Since then, and that, you know, again, public, and you're right, lots of times, we don't realize until it's right in front of us, but, you know, that was a public situation, but it was rejected by the planning board. There, right now, at this point in time, and Allegi, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's no plan that had been submitted to the planning board or the building department for any...
At this time, aren't any plans submitted in the...
For any of those sites?
Yeah, I think the other woman, you know, basically speaking about her house being, you know, next to the other building, well, she's in residential because that line runs through there, so she's adjacent to that.
Right.
And as you know, if you look at the zoning, it says basically, there's a height restriction on that building at thirty-five feet without relief.
Right.
And then there was talk at one point, when there was some conversation, of the building basically being teared back.
Right, okay.
So that way, you know, basically it was a shadow effect, but, you know, as that stuff goes, it's nothing really...
But by the amount of people here and by, you know, the conversations that's been happening over the past few weeks, now I think it's important, and I think this council as well as the new council understands your concerns. Anytime, I think, going forward, as it has in the past, but we, again, sometimes we're busy with life and don't pay attention to it, the planning board will and should notify the abutters relative to any public meetings, and you'll have your chance to not only see what's being presented, but voice your opinion on whether it's something that might be, you can live with or not.
That's promising. So if those plans were rejected, why do they leave those signs up in the window? Like the CVS twenty-plus residential in detail?
I can't answer that one, Phyllis, for you.
Okay.
But going forward, you know, and now we've got a lot of folks who are paying strict attention to what's happening, so I think as we go forward, any plans are submitted, you'll be aware of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the back?
Nick Seald is Precinct Five. I am very concerned, and so are all my neighbors. I was not involved with this in any form or manner. When Agling Road was closed down and the outer street issues took place, it was an epiphany for everybody in town. It woke up the entire public. The proposal that came in tonight was done by ten or twelve people in the precinct that went door-to-door, that made phone calls, and took the time to talk to the residents. Going back to 2014, I really feel that there was, with an issue that big, to change the code of the Center District, there should have been a precinct meeting call. Somebody should have called a precinct meeting, okay? In addition to that, nobody, and I mean nobody, gave us any notification at all, be it certified mail, be it US Postal, there was no notification. We looked at the transcript, there wasn't really much about that in 2014. So in 2014, the code changes, and then 2016, the master plan is admitted. And we had sent a letter the other day to town hall talking about why there was no notification, and they said because the CBD precedes everything. And I don't think that's really, I don't think that's really true. And we have serious other concerns as well. There were no safeguards for the residents, none, absolutely none. Parking is usually about 1.25 or 1.75 per unit. It's now down to about 0.75. How are you protecting your residents with that? The height limits, the scale, from thirty-five feet to forty-eight feet, four-foot buildings, that's unheard of in a historic district like that? I mean, at some point, something terribly is wrong here. And then the drawing of the lines? Why were those lines drawn like that? Why were lines drawn next to residents? Those lines should have gone around the commercial district of the center. Everybody who did that seriously has to look at their own conscience. To put people like Ms. Coughlin to be scared, thirty-year taxpayer, to be frightened that her house is somehow going to be taken away from her or her life has been affected? These are real serious quality-of-life issues. I really think everybody up on the council should look at their conscience. We voted for you, we vote for the state senator, we vote for the resident, we vote for our congressmen, our senators. We just had an election, it went down to seven or eight votes. Everybody in here counts. And this meeting that's taking place tonight should have taken place in 2014. We should have been called. The residents, number one, the businesses should have been approached. We should have slapped down as a community, because the word "democracy," okay? The word "demo" means people, it means something run by the people. And the backlash now is really, really not good for the whole town. You have the business owners that feel that they have not been listened to, the residents haven't been listened to. We have a serious matter in this town, and I don't like to talk in the street saying this one's doing this and this one's doing that, and three or four people are running the town. Well, three or four people aren't running the town, the people of Winthrop are running the Winthrop Town. And I really, really hope that deep down, you look at your conscience, your neighbors, because to tell you what this town is about. This town is about when the whole town turns out with Olympic Herald, the bridge. It's the people of Thornton Park Road that take care of a hundred-and-one-year-old retired schoolteacher. It's about Casa, it's about Viking pride, it's about Richard Honing, who takes care of our veterans. This is what this town is about. And the essence of this town is about to change. People line up for hours at Kirby Funeral Home, Cagiama Funeral Home, for a retired principal or a neighbor or loved one, okay? You have this closeness in this town, and when you try to make the move you're making that does not conform to Winthrop and Winthrop Center, it's going to change everything drastically. I hope everybody takes a serious look at this quality-of-life proposal presented by the residents. I give you all credit because you have the guts to serve. That's a great thing to serve, but you know what? I trust this with you, because a lot of us are working two jobs. Some of us, you know, have sick elderly parents, some of us have different things going on, and our trust lies with all of you. And I truly hope that you kind of put everything at kind of a hold and say, whoa, what's going on here? You know, let's just seriously look at everything and get pensive about it and then go forward in a manner where this beautiful town is not disturbed.
Thank you. Next. John? Do you have the end? Bye, Jack. Tom Riley?
Tom Riley of Twenty-Three Cottage Park Road. But before I get to issues on the neighborhood, it just occurred to me when I was looking here that there's only a few more meetings of the council in this present form that are left, and many of the people who are leaving have served for a large number of years, some of them served in the first few years with me, and I just wanted to express a bit of gratitude for the time, effort, and commitment to the community that's been expressed by not only the ones who are leaving, but the ones who are staying, because they're going to continue the same kind of efforts. I know you've got a lot of business to conduct and a few more meetings to go through, but I think it's, people have spent the kind of time that the people on this council have spent that deserve to be congratulated and thanked for their efforts. But now I want to get to the local...
Yeah, I wish you would reverse it, Tom. It would have been nice to have given us...
Yeah, I think it's important to take a look at, you talk about what's happened in the past to get us to where we are. Where are we going to go as we go forward and how are we going to get there? We've gotten a lot of important data. We've done all kinds of studies. We've had a meeting with the traffic, they've produced a great study of the data of how the center works for parking. I think that's a great basis to use in order to make other decisions about what's going to happen in the center, the master plans, so forth. But I think some of the practicalities, a lot of the neighbors are concerned and they're frightened, frankly. They see a proposal for twelve units on one corner and a sign that advertises the possibility of twenty on the next corner. These are apostles of land that are adjacent to residential districts, and if you take a look, we, going back when we were looking at the Dolmire School and its disposition, we created a special overlay district, and we said we need to be a little bit more flexible in what we can allow to get dilapidated, constructed, and rehabbed and developed. We applied that to a couple of other apostles of land of the hostels or what. That eighteen hundred, if you put twenty units on that lot, you're down to about seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet per unit. It's just impossible. I don't think that the neighbors, my neighbors and myself, should be subject to something that nobody else in town would have to be used in. You've had passionate discussions up here of some of these proposals, the Muffin Town one generated an awful lot of discussion, but that had nowhere near the density proposed that could be possible down there. So what should we do? I think we better take a look at the Center zoning district, particularly what happens in those apostles of land that directly above residential property. Is there a setback requirement? What's the height requirement? Should that be different than a building that might be in the middle of Winthrop Center? The town, as I understand it, has just employed a plan. It's going to be getting...
...on track, sir.
Beginning shortly. I mean, we could take a look at what should take place down the center. We know there should be some development. I've been living two doors away from a vacant building for seven years. It's falling down, it's a detriment to the neighborhood, so we certainly want something to be developed in that location. But what it's going to be, twenty units and people being told, well, there's parking available on the other side of the center. We need to take a look at the residential districts in particular. That's why I think we ought to take a pause on, perhaps have a moratorium on my construction down there until we can have the necessary dialogues with all the people who have a stake in the matter. Develop, use the plan, and use the information that's been developed from all of these other studies, and get a comprehensive idea of where we ought to go and what kind of development is appropriate for that area.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Charles Scott, Summit Avenue. I'm a longtime resident of the town and I'm very concerned about the potential for this development. I recognize that the center is not a, you know, is something that needs to have something done. It's not something that the, you know, that we in the town can be proud of, the way, you know, the condition that it's in now. Having said that, parking is a huge, huge issue. I'm familiar, I'm friends with people who lived in the residential section in South Boston, and I know the impact of severe parking restrictions, you know, on everyone that lives in that area. People have to come home early on weekends or from vacations so that they don't have to drive around for hours looking for parking spaces on residential streets. They can't invite relatives over, you know, to their house because they don't have the parking, you know, to, you know, so they can't suggest that they come over and enjoy meals on a weekend or in the early evening. It's just a severe restriction. If every night when you came home, you had to drive around the block for, you know, for up to an hour looking for an available parking space, you would know what the impact is on your life, okay? It makes it intolerable. I know people who moved out for that reason. I don't want to see after a development goes, you know, after all these developments go through, that the town finds out that this parking issue is so severe that we have to put in a parking garage and we go and we have to have a proposition two-and-a-half override to build some parking garage in the downtown area. Right now, the balance in town is sort of okay, okay? You can find a parking space. Even up on Summit Avenue, there's people on adjacent streets that come up to my street to park, okay? And that's nothing like what the, you know, the center area, you know, situation is. So any development that's done has to properly and reasonably accommodate any future development parking impacts. Otherwise, it's not a wise thing for the town. You'd be creating a nightmare. In the future, even though I live in the Highlands, I'm going to vote every time I get behind the wheel of my car and decide where I'm going to go, you know, to go shopping or do other things. Do I go out of town or do I go down to the center? If I know that I'm going to be frustrated and have to park a half a mile, you know, I might as well, you know, walk from Summit Avenue rather than, you know, drive to the center. Or I'll probably just say, I'll go outside to a strip mall. So I can understand how these businesses are going to be very adversely impacted, you know. It isn't only the center area that's going to be impacted, it's going to be people who live outside of the center who are going to decide if they want to, you know, deal with the traffic issues in the center or just go outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? That being known, thank you all for coming. Why don't we take a five-minute, a three-minute recess? Anyone who'd like to remain for the rest of the meeting, feel free to do so. If not, we'll give you an opportunity to go outside to the cold weather. Okay, we're going to continue, continue along with our meetings. Correspondence, we had Lane Regency, 60 Herman Street, but that's been referred to the planning board. And we'll go into committee reports, rules and ordinance.
The rules and ordinance last meeting was chaired by Councilor Paul Verone. I think he has a motion to bring before the council.
As I recall, this is just a review of a motion that was already put forth. Rules and Ordinance Committee met on October 2nd, 2017, in the first floor conference room of this building. The school department had requested several changes to ordinances. I can read the ordinances or just review them. Prohibited right turns, requested change in section vehicle going down Almont Street, things like that. I can read it all if you wish, but it all has been circulated to you. It's actually a month and a half old now. We also reviewed the violation penalties that will be increasing. And that I will read. Except as otherwise provided by state or any other commission, department, or other body authorized by law to impose penalties for violation of rules, regulations, and orders governing the use and operation of vehicles. Any person convicted of violating any provisions of the rules and regulations of this chapter shall be punished by a fine of not more than $5 for the first offense and not more than $20. So we'll be updating that. So currently is written these limits for the fine offense to chapter... I don't have my glasses. You'll have to excuse me. $5 for the first offense and $20 in subsequent... Simply put, $5 fine is not worth the time or effort it takes to issue a citation. The council has been asked to increase this amount to bring it in line with similar sections of other ordinances. And the decision of the fines... So we moved to increase it to $25 for the first offense and $50 for second offense and $100 for third and subsequent offenses. And that was a revision of 10.04.110. Once again, I can read the other ordinances if you wish.
Unless any one of the council wants them read, we'll pass on that. So that was a motion that came out of committee to accept these changes. Okay, motions were made. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilman, I'm sorry.
Were the ordinances published in the paper and the notification provisions of the charter satisfied?
Yes, they were.
Yes.
Okay. Any other...
And the other thing, we'll say, the, there's no changes in, big changes. Schools changed their hours at some of the schools and some of, you know, if there's no right turn from, I don't remember, say, 7:30 to 8:15, and they changed the school hours. We made the changes to coincide with the changes in school hours. So it's not like there's new streets being moved around or in one ways or no turns. It's just the changing of the times to coincide with the school year this year.
The time changes are 15 minutes difference than what was already in place.
Any other discussion?
That was all, and the meeting concluded at 8:15.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Motion passes. Next will be Miller Field Committee, Councilor Tiere.
Thank you. Well, I could say the Miller Field Committee is extremely happy to announce that substantial completion has been done at Miller Field. There is a temporary certificate of occupancy that has been approved by the town manager. And there will be football Thanksgiving Day at Miller Field. I can't thank enough Gil Bane and Skanska and Woodward and Curran, who have worked with us now on two extremely successful projects, both completed on time. We made a promise in January that this, we would be where we are right now. Two things that we thought would happen that did not happen, doesn't affect the game at all. One, on the power, we made a decision. National Grid's been very busy over the past several months with storms up and down the coast, and we did not feel 100% confident that they would be able to fulfill their promise. So we will do the game on generator power, which is fine and compliance. The only issue we had is we have to have in a registered elevator operator on site, which Gil Bane has graciously enough offered to pay for, and they will be there to provide any support if needed for a lift going up to the box. And we feel within the first week in December, we will have power turned over to regular power. And the only other item, the track surface, as you'll notice when you go to the game, is it's a completed surface, it is striped as of today, but it is black. And one of the items, we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that that's painted. The contractor told us with the weather right now, he would rather paint in June, well, rather paint in the spring. We want to hold it back until after school ends. So the track surface you see now is finished, is the finished product. The lines are in, they'll be able to have track season in the spring. Once school is over in June, we will have the company come back, paint it red, which is what we had planned to do, and then re-stripe it. The field has been field-tested as far as performance testing. All the testing categories were done and were well within range. The fill in the field, if you see, you know, it's the turf, and then there's a fill. The fill is a, it's a coconut mixture of coconut and cork. It's a non-tree nut, it's hypoallergenic. But if you're in the stands Thanksgiving and you're looking down saying, wow, it looks a little brown, it still has to be worked in. It will, the best thing about playing is the kids will have an opportunity to move the stuff around, but it will settle. And the field looks fantastic. Just a couple of things for the game. My understanding is that the town did accept the certificate of occupancy, and the town has issued a one-day permit to the Winthrop Public Schools so they can run their event of the Thanksgiving Day game. And the schools have decided, just for informational purposes, the schools will have offered their water, coffee, hot chocolate. And I think a lot with the sponsorship of Viking Pride. There will be, my understanding, no food allowed to enter the stadium. This is a school decision. So I believe there will be valves out front. Anybody coming in with a Dunkin' Donuts product or whatever it happens to be, they'll have to be discarded before entering the premises. So I just want to make sure everybody's on track and we give people the time to make arrangements as necessary, parking. I believe Cross Street will be closed like a regular Thanksgiving Day game, basically from Main Street down to Franklin.
That's correct.
And there will be access for handicap parking, there'll be drop-off parking available. Everything else, we just, we couldn't be happier, again, to have fulfilled the promise to the town. And we thank everybody for helping and their cooperation. The committee's been fantastic, and we're very happy that there'll be football on Miller Field on Thanksgiving.
And again, thank you to the committee as well as our inspectional services and the town manager. There were some considerations going forward, but everybody worked together and knew how important this was and made it happen. So a successful Thanksgiving and hope we come up on top to open up the field. And next year will be complete and hopefully a fieldhouse, and we'll have a complete facility. So, thank you. Economic Development, Councilor Ennam.
Sure, I have two meetings to report on. The first was on November 2nd at 7 o'clock at the E.B. Newton. This was the monthly CBD stakeholder meeting, which is the first Thursday of every month. Joe Donilevitz and I had an informal discussion with several Central Business District stakeholders regarding the infrastructure project in the center. We, the biggest concern, of course, was parking and how to manage parking going forward, especially with the proposed changes to the sidewalk layout and things like that. Three of the main ideas to come out of that discussion, stakeholders were interested to see the parking data and the traffic study data in advance of the meeting with the landscape architect. So we did have a meeting about parking after that. Stakeholders asked for an opportunity to provide comments on the landscape architect designs for some period of time after the presentation with the landscape architect, which I also thought was a great idea so that, you know, folks could take some time to digest the designs. And then folks were also interested in an updated timeline for the infrastructure project, when work would start, when the project would go out to bid, things like that. And Joe and I, of course, communicated that to you all shortly after the meeting. And then November 14th, there was another meeting with the Economic Development Subcommittee as well as the Transportation Committee to present the results of the parking study that was done during the traffic pilot. And a special thanks to Julia Wallers, who chairs the Transportation Committee for setting up the parking study. For those of you who don't know, during the traffic pilots, Julia Wallers and a team of volunteers went out and actually counted the parking spaces on all of the different streets, private lots and public lots. So we had an idea at various points in the day how full, though, the parking spaces were. And Julia presented the data on November 14th. This meeting was very well attended by residents as well as by Councilors Calla and Christopher. And we do have some maps of the parking data that are up on the website that show at the various times of day, when the streets are full, when the lots are full, when there is capacity, when there is our places to park, things like that. So I think that that study was very valuable and will help us develop a better parking management strategy going forward.
I have them in your package.
Yep.
Great, thank you so much. Middle School Site Review Committee. Jim?
Yes.
Councilor Tiere.
Middle School Site Review Development Committee met last night. Well-attended meeting. Council President-elect Vecchio was there also. And a lot of discussion. I think, I think the committee on a whole is getting... There seems to be another committee being potentially presented tonight, a Public Safety Billing Committee. And I think that the failing from the middle school redevelopment or development committee is that, I think the failing is that they don't feel that there's 100%... They would like, I guess, speaking for the committee, they would like a council, a majority of the council to come back to them with a more defined plan, is what the verbiage was. They feel there might be a lot of redundancy with two separate committees doing basically the same thing for the same parcel of land. But they are moving forward. I know that there's a RFP out, I believe, that went out for...
Out of queue.
An out-of-queue out.
Qualifications.
Okay. For public safety.
Which does not look at any particular parcel of land.
Does not look at any particular parcel, but that would be one of the parcels that they might look at. So the committee is ongoing and not really a lot to report, unfortunately, because still trying to get traction going and having subcommittees formed. So it was about an hour and a half meeting, and we'll be meeting again second week in December.
Thank you, Councilor. Town Managers Report.
It's a little lumpy tonight, and I apologize for that at the onset, but...
Been a while since we've met, so...
And I'm also under pressure obligated to give a financial report in the month of November. So I'll take this opportunity to, along with the CFO, to give you an overview of what we're looking at and forward in the rearview mirrors. So it was today we started a budget review of all departments. It's gone very well so far. We looked at everyone's expenditures from July 1st to October 31st, which is about a third of the way through the budget season, and everyone seemed to be at the 32%, 33% level where they should be. So, so far, those reviews have gone very good. We've also cautioned departments on requesting future expenses, adding expenses to the next budget cycle. Our goal would be to have a low-staffed, low-funded budget and anticipate, you know, raises as we go along through the collective bargaining process. So we don't see a lot of room projecting forward. We did receive 1.2 million in free cash. Again, we have fiscal responsibilities, 30%, 40%, and 10% are being sanctioned out tonight through motions to the appropriate stabilization funds. Stabilization funds are in good order, but they're there for emergency purposes and for extraordinary expenses, so we don't find ourselves back in 2008 and '09 with negative free cash. So, you know, we're cautiously optimistic, I would say, at this point, Michael. We are concerned about insurance premiums accelerating, going up. We do have a significant claim at the Ford Bank School for water damage. It's the right now ongoing run-up of $800,000 in damage. So, you know, that's going to accelerate the premiums pretty significantly, as well as liability insurance premiums we see going up. So Michael has done his due diligence and asked for a breakdown of claims from our insurance agency, and we're trying to look at where our heaviest claims are and how can we reduce those claims in the future years to reduce our premiums in insurance. So insurance is always being looked at. Through training, we can get reward points through Meyer, that can offset some of the premium expenses going up. But certainly, you know, the field will add another $4,000 to our premium effective midnight tomorrow night. So it's certainly, the receipts do look on target as projected by the CFO for this budget cycle thus far, where we are in this particular year. So the revenue's do seem to be lining up with projections. You know, of course, the February report was, stands alone by itself, there were some projections in there that are not lining up. The good news with that, we're still actively going after a $150,000 grant from DVP. They've asked for some clarifications from my office, and Joe and TNG and myself will sit tomorrow and answer those questions, try to secure that to offset some of the expenses there. Bringing up the ferry is, without further direction from the council, we will start developing a plan for the next sailing year, which we are going to start in March. So it's early, we're going to start signing agreements with docking stations and committing to pick up and drop off zoning areas. So, you know, we're going to start that process. We have engaged a couple of different venues, still in negotiations with them, but certainly can add a significant amount of finances to that ferry to try to bring it into the black or even. I don't foresee that happening without, still without the $100,000 third-year commitment from the council. But I think we're getting closer and closer each year to having it balanced on its own. So we do have a significant deficit issue that we have identified, and I have to declare a conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest as the treasurer of the North Metro Regional Dispatch Center, and I'll ask Michael to give the council report on that particular item. As treasurer, I can answer questions for the council, and we certainly can discuss how we're going to do that. So, Michael, you want to...
From the FY '18 budget, we had the initial budget of the Regional Dispatch Center when we were building the budget. We got the final budget after we had approved the FY '18 budget, and it wasn't significantly different than what we had approved. So that's not the problem. The problem is the revenue assumptions that we had going into the FY '18 budget. From there, we had estimated that the Regional Dispatch, our assessment, would be $590,000. It ended up being $599,000. So we appropriated $290,000 from the general fund, and then we had a number of other funds that we were going to be taking from. One of the accounts, that was the largest account that we were taking from, we ended up having to take from in FY '17 after the budget had been approved, as part of our FY ' '17 assessment for the rec. And that's because we weren't anticipating a full-year assessment, because they weren't open for a full year. But due to their cash flow needs, they had to have a full year of assessment from the communities in order to have enough money in their accounts to make payroll throughout the course of the year. So that was a hit on that line. And then there were some estimated amounts from state funding that we would be getting from the Commonwealth, which was some money that we were getting in the current year, as well as some additional increases to our funding by moving to a Regional Dispatch Center. What was not known to us at the time of making the budget was that those amounts from the state are reimbursable amounts. So they are only paid out to communities and Regional Dispatch Centers after the year. So this is the sort of situation where we're looking at a significant deficit in... So this is the sort of situation where we're looking at a significant deficit in the general fund budget for this, but we are hopeful that a significant portion of that deficit would get paid back in the state funding the following year. So it's something that hopefully we'll be able to make up for next year and from there going forward, if the Dispatch Center is able to bring on additional communities, that would lower our assessment. Currently, it is just Winthrop and Revere. We're hopeful that other communities in the area will join in. And I know that the center has been in talks, at least with Chelsea and Saugus.
Yeah. What is the amount, Michael, you have?
The amount that we are in deficit right... There's no deficit right now, but there are two additional bills and the total amount would be $300,000.
Great. And why would we say we're hopeful and not that we're sure that we're getting the money? Reimburse.
As the Treasurer of the Board for the Regional Dispatch Center, the Board has the right to vote reasonable reserves. The Center has no reserves. Any business operation will have reserves, including the town of Winthrop, we have reserves. So the Center will, at the end of the year, look at their budget, look at all their assets, determine what's a reasonable reserve. And then the IMA says that after we determine the reasonable reserves, it is then voted back to each community in equal contribution shares. So you'll see something that just the reserve has not been established and there is no reserve. So our first quarter bill, you know, we don't send it out in July 1st. So a Regional Dispatch Center, like a Regional School District, wants their money on July 1st so they can make their payrolls. So again, this is a new enterprise. If we're going into our second year, we want to be fully transparent and upfront with the council. And certainly, I'm only one voting member of the Board, Chief Linigan's the second, and the Revere has three votes, and the Regional Dispatch Director is the seventh vote. So we don't control the Board and we don't control those votes. So we're, you know, when we say we're hopeful, we're hopeful, we're hoping to establish those reasonable reserves and then return the money in equal portions. So you may not see exactly what Michael is saying in back, and you're going to see some portion of it as a return and comeback. So the grants are set up by 911 as a reimbursable grant, and they don't lay the money out.
Okay. Councilor?
But, of course, we have to spend that $300,000. The state is going to reimburse that $300,000 the following fiscal year?
To the REC.
To them.
And then they will disperse back to us less the amount that they need to hold as reasonable reserves. They do not have a formally adopted reserve policy, so we can't guess at what reasonable reserves would mean. Typically, that's a function of a percentage of the operating budget. Their FY '18 operating budget, the total budget, was 2.75 million. So if they were looking for 10% reserves on hand, which would be a fairly conservative amount, they'd want to hold $270,000. So, but we don't know how much we're getting from the state and Revere's share and all of that.
And is Revere in a similar situation as we are?
Last I was aware, Revere was behind on their payments.
They're fully counted. All agencies are fully counted on their payments. There's no indication from the Revere side that they would be lagging behind on their payments.
I just have a question for you, Chief. You mentioned the number of people. Revere has three votes, we have two.
We have three.
We have three. Who's the third?
John Goodwin is the third.
Okay.
Town Manager, the Police Chief, and Fire Chief from each community make up the board.
Okay, I was thinking you are the police chief.
I will go backwards to being that as soon as Mr. Riley and the crew is done with this.
Thank you.
Yes, how much does the state usually kick in? Is there any precedent for that?
The amount is based on the number of calls, and I don't know the exact formula, but I know that moving to a regional center, you get higher consideration than if it's an individual center.
It's based on the call volume, the amount of agencies that are in the center. So we're looking at probably about $749,000 reimbursement from the state. You know, when we were alone, standalone communities, Winthrop got about $38,000, Revere got about $160,000. So going to the regional centers does add more revenue into the...
Anyone else from the council? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Hey, that's good enough for the finance talk, huh? You hear something to think about. Problem Properties, Algie, and Special Services, just want to thank them and Chief Linigan, Steve Calla from DVW, you know, for putting a lot of pressure on their assets throughout this last week and a half, two weeks with Miller's Field. I certainly appreciate their collaboration with my office and to get things done, but also, that was only one little thing we were doing. Hillside Ave, 43 Hillside, the pictures are over here, that was a fire in the attic on that property. And then we went to foreclosure receivership, Dan Brojean brought it to court. You can see on the right-hand side what a beautiful update it is. It adds certainly a significant value to the community and to that street and that at the end of this, and they sell it and close out, they'll owe the town $40,000 in fines and fees. So Problem Property Task Force, I know you, everyone, so graciously funds that at $20,000 here and $20,000 here, but it really does bring back value to the properties and the street, the community, and gives us great assets moving forward and taxable properties moving forward at a much higher rate than it would be in deplorable conditions. And the benefit is the program's not costing the taxpayers anything because we're bringing enough in on the fines and fees, portion of going through this process. So there's another one, Almont Street, I believe, that's about $30,000 in fines that we'll be bringing in very shortly as well. So I like to keep everyone up to date on the Problem Properties because all you see is money going out, you don't hear a story line coming back to the community. It's a lot harder to vote those assets out.
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilor Calla.
So how do they, do they put that property on the market? How do they sell it? What exactly is the procedure? Somebody's interested.
Sure, they'll put it on the market. The receiver is responsible to put it on the market.
So will it go in the paper?
Yeah, it goes in the paper. I believe there'll be a story in this week's paper of what they actually did, how beautiful it looks, and then they'll have for sale signs up and they engage your relatives and everything else to take care of that. They get to offset their expenses first, and then if the property owner doesn't have any loans or bank loans on it, it's not bank-owned, any excess goes back to the property owner. If there's a bank involved, then obviously the excess will go back to the bank after the receiver has been paid in full, the town has been paid their taxes and liens and fines.
So basically, it goes through the court system. Goes under receivership.
Yep. It's all court-approved.
Right.
The receiver has to be court-approved, and Dan Brojean walks everyone through that process.
Anything else on Goddardman? Town Manager?
The open meeting law, just want to make everyone aware of that. They have changed some of their rules and regulations. The clerk of the town of Winthrop has also changed her regulations. She'd like to see minutes in her office, no later than 45 days from the last, the date of the meeting. And that'll give the people who meet monthly time to vote. There are 30 days and 15 days extra to get their minutes in. So some of the committees are lagging on their responsibilities getting those minutes in so we can post them to help the community understand what's going on. Autonomous vehicles, there is some conversation at MAPC about autonomous vehicles. The nine jurisdictions closest to Boston have been asked to at least sit and talk about autonomous vehicles and overlapping autonomous vehicles to each community that connects to Boston. So that's a process we're listing in on, and certainly we go back to the council at each step of the way. There's a motion tonight to fund the town employee recognition luncheon that we have every holiday season. That'll be the 21st, the senior center, from noon to 3:00. Love to have the council come as well. The Cub Scouts will redecorate in French Square on 122 from 1:00 to 4:00 with wreaths. And they told me, guaranteed me to be better than the Scamros. So. The Dog Park update, we have distributed tonight a what lands delineation report to the council. It'll be up on the website tomorrow morning. It's also been forwarded to DCR, we received that today. Rekia, on that? So I've distributed the legal advice or the zoning recommendations of the middle school to the council as well as to the planning board. They had several questions. That'll be our fourth legal opinion to the planning board on that particular issue. There was successful professional development tourniquet training with the school, fire and police for all the nurses and school and school staff. So I forbid if there is a need for that, everyone's well-trained and supplied with tourniquets. The health department will be moving to the EB News of School within the next two weeks. We're waiting for data drops. Their painting and remodeling has been done by DVW, and they'll be ready to move in a couple of weeks. Massport, we met with Massport Foundation. I certainly would ask the council tonight to give me a confirmatory vote to move forward on the 501(c)(3) foundation that's required to be developed in order for us to receive money in from the Massport guarantee of $2.5 million. That was kind of off-track for a while. We put it back on track. It came in, we had a very good meeting with our lawyers and their lawyers, and we're very close to coming and signing those agreements, but they need a 501(c)(3) set up. And so I'd ask for a confirmatory vote to move forward in that direction tonight.
Have all the appointments been made on that? Terry, have all the appointments made on that?
That the trust has not been finalized yet?
Question?
Yes.
Could we, would it be possible to circulate the draft agreements?
I'll check with our lawyers. They're going to give you that. We have a draft as of right now. After the meeting, they were going back to try to finish and come to kind of agreements on that, so. Be happy to.
Yeah. But it's important so we can move that part of the document forward that we approved the 501(c)(3) tonight, allow you...
Yeah, I'd just like a confirmatory vote to move forward to...
Confirmatory.
To draft those documents and making sure that that's what we want to do as a community. And I don't see why we wouldn't, but just want to give a way...
And just to let the public know, that was a $2.5 million consideration for Millerfield and other considerations.
Yeah, it doesn't specifically say Millerfield.
Right.
FAA regulations prohibits them from giving any resource. Winthrop is allowed to have this set up, being close proximity to the airport and being compliant with FAA regulations. So it's very, I think everyone knows the intent. I think the speaker and everyone's worked very hard to get some funding to assist us with the Millerfield costs. But in future years, if we get more money into that fund, it's not, it doesn't prohibit us from using it from other areas.
Correct. That's a clarifying.
Now, there's been all kinds of rumors about, is the town, I mean, obviously, $2.5 million for the town, what's the town giving up for that $2.5 million?
Nothing.
Nothing? So there's no...
Obviously, we can't use...
There's some restrictions on it.
We can't use that money to protest against Massport for development. They don't want their money to be used against them to obstruct future development and growth, but it's restricted to that money. The way it was written, I would find it hard to use that money in that manner anyway, even if they did say that.
Right.
To be quite honest with you, but this is very similar to the East Boston Foundation that's been set up now for 20 years. And it's mirrored after that foundation. So, you know, I think it's, to be quite frank, it's legislative aides that have, you know, made this work and have benefit, but have given up anything.
Right.
Just to follow up on that, so that's not a, it's not going to turn out to be a mitigation agreement for the Terminal E expansion?
Right.
There is certain benchmarks that if they meet, we get money. So it's not certainly a 2.5, here's your check. Each year, they have to meet benchmarks, and some of it is almost already done, and some of it's development in future years, and the buildup is certainly connected to that. So as their revenue goes up, we get our money. If that makes sense. So if they add parking in Chelsea, they are meeting their parking demands, we get a portion of that parking to fund the five, you know, it's $500,000 a year over five years, I believe. Don't quote me on that, I'm just trying to remember the time as I saw it that day.
I'd really like to see the agreements.
I would.
Okay. Anything else from the council?
The North Metro Regional Vocational School is establishing a stabilization fund. They have put us on notice that they're establishing a stabilization fund. However, there would be no assessment at this time, but just moving forward in budget season, know that that's going to be creeping up on us as well. MWRA has authorized use of some Project 4 money, leftover money that was in Contract 4 to be used on Washington Ave. So you allowed me the authorization to spend, and now we won't need that authorization to be fulfilled. So we're using existing money to take care of the Washington Ave. From my understanding from Mr. Calla, who's on vacation, is that that should wash the complete expense to Washington Ave. I have submitted a report tonight on the traffic pilot of the Winthrop Center. I don't think, I don't expect a conversation tonight. It's a document that's about eight pages long, but has several addendums. We tried to put all the data that we analyzed in there. There's some video that we couldn't put in that report, but the video is certainly a large volume of video and make it available to anyone that wants to review it in my office, certainly, so they can see what we looked at. I think the traffic counts are very transparent. The recommendation in the report is not to declare as closed Hagman Road. It became a secondary regress when Potomac Street flooded. And if not for the pilot, we wouldn't, and for the torrential downpours, we would have not known that that was a secondary road that you could get out if you did close down French Square and the side of Samuels. That was very important. It's the same reason we didn't want Cross Street closed in its entirety because it's the secondary road to Revere Street to bypass some major leaks and a lot of breaks there on Revere Street. So I don't think there's any surprises in there. I think everyone has already agreed that, you know, voting to open it was not to close it again, and certainly, I'd be happy to discuss the report the next meeting with anyone individually, anyone in the community individually. Part of that report, there's parking information in there. Julia Wallace is here tonight. I'd ask her to give a brief overview of that parking study. I'm not a parking expert. I don't, I haven't counted cars, so I left that to the person who has more knowledge than I in that area. So thank you, Julia, if you don't mind. Come on up and just give an overview of that parking.
Sure. Dearest, I'll have this on hand. It's my sort of brief summary. A lot of this is visual, so I apologize to people in the crowd for not being able to see what I'm referring to, but I just wanted to give you guys a brief overview. As you know, we've had a volunteer-led parking...
It's at the back of the big clip.
Oh, it's in the back.
Yep. Very nice. So I wanted to make it visual by doing these heat maps, and I have MAPC to thank for working with me to do that. And I'll walk you through just some of the brief findings without making any official recommendations, because I understand that that's going to be the role of the Parking Management Committee, which I look forward to that moving forward. But in the meantime, we have this information, and as Councilor Engman mentioned, we did present it to the public last week in order to be transparent and just provide information as we had it, especially in advance of going into the landscape architect meetings. So this was a volunteer study led by myself with a lot of help from the CEO, parking clerk, John E. of TSAC, and a number of volunteers. I myself could not possibly count all the cars in the center five times a day, three days a week for two weeks, which is exactly what we did, but it was truly a team effort, and I'm grateful to everyone on the team who allowed us to make that happen. Really, our goal was to find out simply, it was simple, how are parking facilities, existing parking facilities being used in CBD at any given time of day so that we could identify management solutions in order to maximize access and availability while also supporting local businesses, residences, and economic development that we need. So we did these on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, counted everywhere from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., 7:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then 12:00 to 1:00 a.m., which at first I thought was a crazy idea, but we're very lucky that that's when Mike gets off work. So it was convenient for him to swing through the center and count cars. So I also want to point out that the data from the midnight counts are not included in these figures. That's obviously a very different pattern of activity in the center, but we do have that information. We were specific to separate between on-street spaces, public lot spaces, and private lot spaces. And if you wanted to see, you know, the lion's work of data, we have it in a massive spreadsheet. You can actually zero in on any particular lot or street any time of day. But for the purpose of today, just want to show you the study area. Where everyone here, we really zeroed in on the center, so what made this count... Where everyone here, we really zeroed in on the center, so what made this count unique was that.
Joseph, what Joseph has.
Oh, okay. It's up there. As you know, there have been previous counts done, but we felt that they were a little bit extraneous to what was really people's prime affiliation of the center. So we took out Miff, half square, took out Winthrop Street and zeroed in on the CBD specifically. So it totaled 563 spaces and we color coded them and you can just get a sense of what we're talking about here in our study area. Acknowledging that sort of an industry target is between 75 and 85% utilization, that shows you that you are not wasting space, but you don't have a shortage. So keep in mind, as we go through our counts, that's sort of what we'd be going for. Any questions so far?
Nothing from the council so far.
Okay. So, oh, that's, no, no, no.
Back one.
You jumped way ahead. Okay. One more? Yeah. All right. So also want to point out that the data I'm showing you here is post Hagman Road. We did count while Hagman Road was closed. We also counted after Hagman Road was open. I could definitely release that data, but to be honest, it wasn't that different. It really wasn't significant. So we thought to be relevant, we would show the data for after it reopened because that's what we're going to have moving forward. But if you want to see what happened with parking when it was closed, we have that information too. So we can see that on weekday morning, Tuesday morning, if you have experienced a difficulty finding a space to park at Woodside Ave, right, it's pretty tough. 85 to 100% occupied. That's a tough situation. Then if you look at municipal lots, Walden Street, the rink, even our private lots, pretty much empty. So around, around French Square, pretty jammed in the morning. Next slide. Afternoon, we see things start to pick up in our private lots on the north side of town. I guess that's north, I don't know my directions, but the Michael Mall area, Woodside area is still staying pretty well occupied, but again, our lots, Pauline Street, even the Hagman Road lot, B of A lot, pretty much empty. Next slide. Later in the afternoon, you see things really start to jam up. I know that Thursday is payday, so we see a little bit of a difference between Thursday and Tuesday and I'm glad we have those two days to compare the difference there. Again, the pattern here is our municipal lots sit empty, a lot of the private lots are pretty underutilized. The streets start to lighten up, especially Somerset, Woodside Ave compared to morning. Next slide. In the evening, you sort of start to see your dinner crowd pick up around the Michael's Mall and Woodside, La Cuesta area gets a little bit more busy, whereas the other side of Woodside Ave drops off. Our municipal lots are still pretty empty. All right. So Saturday mornings, we have a pretty hungry breakfast crowd. I think the mornings is definitely the busiest time in the center. Pretty tough to find a space on-street. Even some of our lots start to fill up a little bit, but we do have some streets where there is still capacity, but for someone driving into the center, you would feel like there's nowhere to park if you didn't know any other, any other way.
Can you explain the difference between the two different sides?
Oh, sorry, you probably can't see, that's just Saturday. Oh, sorry. This is morning and afternoon. I combined these onto one slide.
Morning and afternoon.
Yeah, sorry, I did that just to condense for this.
Because the key in the book is, oh, 10:11.
Yeah, those are.
On both.
Hmm.
The key says 10:11.
You're right. I might have to go back and look at that. I was kind of cutting and pasting different, to sort of condense things for this presentation. Looks like I'm showing the same thing, but they're different. Let me get back to you on that one. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
You know what? All of them say 10 to 11 a.m. for Saturday. That's very strange. I didn't notice that before.
They are different times.
Yeah. It's moving on from 10 a.m. It's progressive. I didn't notice that in the key, that we didn't actually change it, so that, that's a big, you have an I. This one on the left then would be late afternoon, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, then the dinner area. You'll see that the rink really picks up and I'm glad we counted this day because that's when there was a big hockey match. So it was actually over capacity in that particular area, but it was good to see how the rest of the center was performing at that time.
You meant backwards.
Yeah, you meant backwards. So I like to zero in, I really was glad that we were able to do these heat maps to give sort of a geographic context of the occupancy, but I'd like to sort of show it just on a bar graph sometimes, just to really show how it all breaks down between on-street, private lots and municipal lots. You'll see that in the morning on, in a given Tuesday, that's really the busiest time in the center, but where most of that congestion is, is on-streets. Tough to find a space, almost 70% occupancy on-streets. A look at the gray line, the purple line, you'll see that our lots really have a lot of excess capacity. We're not using, we're not using our capacity. Next slide for Thursday. We see a little bit different pattern. It picks up our peak times more in the late afternoon. We get even more, even busier, almost hitting that 85% zone of total spaces, but our municipal lots are what's really bringing it down, really lagging. So excess capacity there, not quite enough or at capacity on-street. And that's what people really experience and what they say is right. And I really wanted to have this data to sort of validate what people are saying and feeling.
So Julia, you see up there that.
Through the chair, please.
Somerset Avenue is almost the capacity on the bottom half and College Park, which you can only park on one side, is at 100%.
I'm not sure off the top of my head that. In the morning?
Nick, can we just go through the chair, please, if you don't mind?
Yeah. Yeah, there's definitely times where Somerset is at zero excess capacity, but then there's some times when it was pretty empty, especially specifically around dinnertime. So different demands at different times, and that's what we wanted to show. So Saturday, like I said, our mornings are really where we peak in occupancy in the morning. Still plenty of spaces in public and private lots, if you just skip backwards. So Saturday, we see that municipal lot start to spike in the evening because that's when there was a big game. So good to see what things look like when we have a lot of people descending on the center, a lot of whom are probably not from Winthrop. And it's worth noting that the Walden Street lot was about empty at that time. Okay, so like I said, I'm not providing official recommendations here, but some of the takeaways that we have here is that, well, it definitely is difficult to find a parking spot on certain streets at certain times of day. Overall, our parking facilities are really quite underutilized overall in the CBD. So the parking problems that many people are talking about or experiencing and perceiving actually have less to do with the supply and more to do with how it's managed and how it's accessed. So availability, access management, those are our problems, not necessarily supply right now, right now. Okay, I want to emphasize that. So our highest demand and lowest occupancies are on-streets. That is, it's hardest to find a space on-street. Our lowest and highest, lowest demand, highest occupancies are in lots, meaning it's easiest to find a space in a parking lot, if you can find a lot, and if you feel safe, walking from it, safe or inclined. So and finally, that the bulk of our underutilized spaces are in privately owned lots. So those are immediate takeaways. In this sense, and in my bigger presentation, I have a lot more slides that go into this as well as the parking workshop that we did in September with Jason Schreiber, really gets into theory and methodology and case studies, how this looks in other places, but I like to sort of sum it up in that really we don't have a parking problem. And I'm not saying that to dismiss it, like this, this is not a problem, but it's not so much about parking as it is about an information problem, a walkability problem. And to that end, I don't mean people are lazy, they should be walking. It's walkability of the center, not of the people, okay? And an efficiency problem. So just some potential solutions to really make parking work. We all want it to work. We want to be able to go forward in a way that doesn't disrupt neighborhood character that makes our residents and our businesses feel respected. I'm really quite moved by some of the comments we heard earlier today and clearly people are feeling nervous and not heard, so wanting to make sure that these, whatever solutions we go forward with, keep that in mind. And just really starting from the basic, lowest hanging fruit with information, like I said, really it's a problem about information. We've done a better job lately by marking our lots, make sure there's signage, maps, both at the pedestrian scale, you know, so maybe the landscape architect could include like, you know, signs, welcome to Winthrop, we're finding, you know, La Cuesta this way, Center this way, even Beach that way at a pedestrian context as well as at a car level. Updating and expanding our time limits to focus on availability, not turnover. Availability is key and marking them consistently. I know that there's lots of issues with ordinances being unenforceable because they counteract each other, so I really hope that the Parking Management can get in, Committee can get into more details on how to do our internal housekeeping with Parking Management. Second, just improving better access to our facilities, that really comes down to walkability. And I keep saying walkability because really, I'm not just like super pro pedestrian, I'm just pro people, we're all people, every single person who drive to the center is a pedestrian. Let's not forget, we are not automobiles, so we need to be thinking about human beings, number one. Improving how human beings get around, how our sidewalks connect between parking facilities so that the minute people step out of their car, they're comfortable, they're safe, they know how to get to the businesses that they're trying to get to and can easily maneuver around French Square and don't feel like they need to park three different times to go to three different places in the center. That's horribly inefficient and not pleasant and you might as well go to a strip mall, right? And to make routes more beautiful and interesting. The third thing is improving efficiency. I sort of alluded to this in the Jason Schreiber presentation, gets into more detail, but really exploring shared parking agreements that are a win-win. I know this is not a new notion, I know it's been tried, there are many ways to do it. I hope that it's considered win-win for the property owner and the town. Develop permit programs so that there is legitimate ways for business owners and employees to park without taking up the highest demand spaces that we need for the people who need it most, our patrons, people who visit the center. And finally, rewarding good behavior. So, you know, making, walking, biking, taking transit, appealing, safe, pleasant, inviting, convenient, all those things. And then finally, you know, considering things like pricing that might be on the line if we have to, if we come to that point. That's an amazing way to affect behavior on developing permit programs, having a business improvement district and keeping, the upkeep of our CBD. And that is all. I have links to the, my full presentation. I encourage you, really encourage you to watch, to watch the full parking workshop that we did in September. You'll be super inspired and excited. Thanks.
One of the questions I have is, you know, we talked about the rink lot and the lot on Walden Street and how underutilized it is now. If we had done this study two years ago, when the middle school was in use, it'd be full all the time.
Right.
So to use a lot that's about to be developed, hopefully in some way, shape or form, whether it be whatever it happens to be, are those lots going to be utilized again in full or won't even be lost there depending on what's going to be? So to use that data, I think is a little misleading and the parking expert that, what's his name again? I'm sorry.
Jason Schreiber?
Who was incredible and I went to his thing when he had the presentation at the high school and I thought he was great, but one of the things he said was he likes to keep everything linear. He, he thought that those lots would not be conducive to using in the center because of street access and.
Yeah, Pauline Street is a big barrier.
And stuff like that.
Yeah.
But I think it's, you know, and I think what you just mentioned too about, I mean, you really didn't say enforcement, but you basically said to redo, you know, look at the regulations in the center and how many of those cars, employee cars or something like that.
Residents, yeah.
Right. But I do think, you know, you look at, again, the type of businesses, there are not a lot of businesses that are conducive to a lot of walking and we live in an area where it's not sunny and beautiful all the time and weather gets miserable, snow, rain, wind, it's been miserable. People aren't going to do a lot of walking to go to, yeah, orthopedic person or dentist or hairdresser. I mean, those are kind of one-stop shop and kind of places that people want to be able to park close, but I'm impressed with the amount of data you've collected and really appreciate it.
And there's a lot more. This is like.
There's a lot more.
Sneak peek. Yeah, and I agree with you about the uses of the center, but as, I think we all know the center's going to change and there's vacant buildings and we don't know what's going to be there. And ultimately, I think what all our plans say that is our center is special and it is a destination. It's not a strip mall where you just park and get your coffee and leave or do your one thing and leave. We hope that you go to your, get your nails and your hair and your coffee and a restaurant and gift shop, you know, all in one and it's a place that you do want to stay, but we can't do that without making nice public spaces and walking experience. And I would say Davis Square stays pretty busy all year round.
Thank you.
It's a different area though.
Totally.
It is.
Anything else?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
I just wanted to emphasize, this was an infrastructure project. When I looked at it and when I got involved in it, it was an infrastructure project. It's now turned into something more than an infrastructure project. We need to get back to the basics as a community and certainly look out the front window in incremental steps and, and developing incremental steps in taking care of our own infrastructure. We do have a significant amount of money on the line here. You know, Mr. Callow has urged me, urged the council to settle infrastructure so we can go out to bid. We were supposed to be able to bid in October, actually September for November 1st stock date. We've blown past those deadlines. We're now in, we're hoping to get a bid out, bid specs out by December, but that doesn't look hopeful. So the longer we wait, the more we push into the spring, the less availability of quality construction companies that will be available to us to do our infrastructure work. I think we need to look at the infrastructure that helps everyone down there, whether it's a nail salon, dentist office, a beauty salon or a convenience store. We saw how it flooded. We certainly added stuff to Pottemore Street to take care of the flooding in the Jefferson and Pottemore Street area. And then, you know, as people want to develop, they have a whole process they have to go through and we need to be transparent and involve the community and those neighborhood people in that process. I think, you know, we did have a contract service out for a planner not to exceed $30,000. I'm anxious to get that planner in to the conversations with the neighborhoods and the people who want to develop to find out what is the way forward. You know, I'm not a planner and certainly I'm from here and I live here and I walk and talk to everyone here. I think it'd go a long way with the residents and everyone else just to have a process and just to have the information that they can grasp their hands around. So that's why I'm urging the council to really refocus our efforts on, on that and try to get the bid specs out for an infrastructure project. Infrastructure doesn't mean development. I was at the landscape design meetings and, you know, I think people automatically assume the town manager's office is in favor of a design or a specific design and we're not. We gave no direction or input on the design. My operational team is against some of the bump outs that are in the landscape design because it makes it more difficult for plowing and snow removal and ice. It also gives us no depository areas for that, for that snow. So operationally, you know, I have said that to some of the business owners, some who may be here tonight, I want to be fully honest with the council, that I put that message out that we're not in favor of all the bump outs, but ultimately it's not my decision. It's the council's decision. The towns have, peoples have elected you to these positions to make these decisions. Sometimes it's a tough job and I appreciate the work that goes into it and the time that's spent at meetings and design meetings and everything else. It's a lot of work and, but I think the public has to hear from my office that we're there to work with them, not against them. We don't want people that have been here 30 years, 40 years, 50 years to be in fear of having their house overshadowed by a building that's going to go up that's going to overshadow. That's not, technically it's not even legal to overshadow as we know and they have to step them back, but we want everyone to understand that. And I don't think we have a good message out there at this point. We're going to be working hard to improve the communications with each developing site and community and neighborhood. The regional dispatch center has just hired an analyst that services all four police and fire departments and two in Revere, two in Winthrop. That we can actually start to have some community meetings based on crime data and also update people on other things that are going on in their districts. So that's something we hope to get going and at the, towards the end of the winter beginning, like we did a couple of years ago. So I'm all open for, for input and that, that will conclude my report.
Yeah, and I too have to encourage this council and some of the council who are here, council-elect, you know, the infrastructure is extremely important. If we don't get this done, there's an opportunity or a chance that we could lose this money and a chance that we may not be in favor going forward for other grants. Infrastructure, let's forget about the, and I shouldn't say forget, but as far as the development, we understand your concerns. We hear from Mr. Seotis and others in the neighborhood about the development portion of it. We hear about the parking, but we need to put that kind of aside right now and address need to put that kind of aside right now and address it as needed, but we really need to get this infrastructure done. It's vitally important to this grant and grants going forward. Councilor Terry.
And so just to reiterate our asked question, we talked about it as an infrastructure project. However, my understanding is when we decide on the infrastructure part, we are going to have, obviously, development is down the road, but we do have to decide on a streetscape as part of that infrastructure. So we do have to discuss the parking, unfortunately, the parking, the bump outs, all that stuff has to be discussed and finalized before we start the RFP process for the infrastructure.
Certainly, the icing of the cake, the top layer, needs to be discussed and voted. As far as parking and regulations of parking, we can do that and remove that through the process, but bump outs, certainly, you're going to have to discuss that. You're going to have to decide whether you want them or not. You're going to have to decide whether or not you want Jefferson and Siders Samuels closed. You're going to have to decide whether you want a left-hand turn at the end of Woodside to go up Bartlett, and also whether or not you want to take Jefferson outlet only out to Putnam to pick up two parking spots there. You know, I think it's important to remember during the pilot, the pilot was implemented and asked for, to really let people know they're not going to wake up two years down the road, two and a half years down the road, just to see what happened to the center. It was the generate conversation, it was generate to see if the traffic pattern would work. It probably exceeded my expectations in that respect, and, you know, I expected a few people to realize what was going on, and a lot more did. And that's a positive thing on when you do pilots. You get real input for the people who are really affected in that area. And let's ask as public safety officials, see if we can handle the traffic load on the streets. You know, Bartlett with the left intern at the end of Woodside was no significant change, a couple hundred cars you're looking at. So, you know, that could handle it. We doubled the amount of cars on Putnam during, and it's all in the report, and the actual data collection is on the addendum in that report for anyone to look at. So, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer either, but I played one in this count, and we tried to do the best we can by looking at other traffic reports and making it the best one we could come up with, to be transparent about the numbers and let the community look at it and give the input to the council with me directly.
So we will have to make some tough decisions, but I encourage us not to lose traction to get that. When can we get the information regarding the bump outs and the landscape design, the final?
We asked at the end of the last meeting for any final report, but we won't give them the comments that we've been receiving. We've been receiving a lot of comments, and we appreciate those comments, but we want those comments represented as a landscape designer. And then we also will make, you know, chief chief of the council on those comments, so you realize if they haven't been included in the design and what you really can consider.
We left a comment period for the landscape architects open through Thursday. We'll get all those comments of the landscape architect after the holiday and talk to them about getting us the report.
Okay. We'd like to get it sooner than later. And again, whether it happens on this watch or whether it happens on the other watch, we either have to make a decision or the council-elect coming in have to make a decision quickly. So we encourage them as they're here tonight to listen to the information, gather as much information, and if it's on our watch, encourage us on what you'd like to see also, any one of the councils here. Councilor Raymond?
Just to add to that, for the public, the landscape architect presentation from November 16th is on the town website under the project and presentation tab. It was a very interesting presentation.
Presentations are up on the website now.
Fantastic, fantastic. So I would encourage everyone to take a look at the presentation if they couldn't attend the meeting and send the comments to town manager office at town.winterup.us.
The traffic report will be up there tomorrow morning, micros obligations to the council, and then we'll post it tomorrow morning.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from the council of town manager? And before we add, we're coming to November 30th, and the interim town manager is coming up to his end date. I'm going to put, give an appointment of another 90 days, and I'd like a confirmatory vote maybe from the council tonight to the interim town manager. He's done a tremendous job to this point. We don't want to keep him away from his real love and passion across the street, however, I would like, I would like to move that going forward.
If I could just, yes, either certain portion of that 90 days, I would ask for full town manager's powers to sign off on public safety official appointments and civil service. I have three appointments currently pending in the town manager's office. As an interim, I cannot assign a permanent appointment. So just for safety, appointments only, I would ask for that power.
And I was going to bring that forward, and some of those, public safety, have to do with the academy, the fire academy chief, correct?
We have four people that today completed all their medicals and their physical agility tests in a hope to get them in the May class, that's the soonest. If there was any delay, I'd be looking at it on August class.
And we want to make sure we have the proper manpower for the fire department, so in that 90-day period, we would have asked for a 30-day consideration for full authority to make those appointments.
Which first thirty of this?
The first thirty, yeah.
Is it as a motion?
Yeah. Thank you. I'd like to bring forth the motion to allow a 30-day appointment for full authority to the town manager with an additional 60 days as an interim. We'll talk to the cop on page, however, I think that it would be appropriate and make that motion going forward. I guess I should have condensed that.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
A question.
Counsel.
In terms of the charter, do we have that ability to bifurcate the 30, 90 days specific of that?
Yes, I believe we do. We've been in touch with Howard Greenspan, and he's going to send us the proper language to bring that forward. So that's a yes.
Counsel Dovetta.
I'm just wondering, the way the charter reads, do we want to somehow do it in two separate motions, the first being a 30-day appointment as town manager, and then subsequent motion that in 30 days, a 60-day appointment for interim town manager position? Do we have the, I was reading the charter provision of that, and if we can put the two motions together, why not?
Do you want to make an amendment to the motion? It's on the floor.
I'm trying to think what the motion actually was stated, so I can amend it. I think in talking to-
Well, it has to come from the council president.
Yeah, I think in talking to Howard Greenspan, he was okay with the language of having a 90-day with a 30-day full authority and 60-day.
I didn't ask him specifically how he wanted it done.
All right, so as far as-
For his caution.
Yeah. As far as caution, I'm okay with that. What we'll do is, I'll rescind my motion and ask for a 30-day appointment with full authority for the town manager.
I'll second that.
Motion was made for a 30-day full appointment of town manager, Terrence Delahanty, that's been seconded. Further discussion, any discussion on this motion?
Mr. President?
Vice President?
And I'm, sorry, I'm thinking as we're going here. Do we need to have dates effective, we said 30 days?
December for us.
I forget what the date, the-
His term now ends-
February 30th.
November 30th.
Okay.
So it's necessary we do it for the 30 days ending his term, and then in December, if we want to go forward with the other 60 days, I suppose another motion can be made by the council president.
The only question my fellow councils on is, that'll be over holiday weekend, and the council will not be in place for those two days if we don't have something in place on January 1st. Do we want to make a second motion, January 1st to February 28th?
Well, we have a meeting in December, but the first 30 days will cover it until our meeting in December.
As I was bringing it up, I just want to make sure we're covered in those two-day interim.
Counsel Vice President, could we just make, could we make amendments in motion just to have a 60 or a 90-day with full power, to be done with it for the public safety?
I don't know if Howard Greenspan gave you, did he say we could do it for the whole 90 days?
We talked about a 30-day period, and talked about-
If Howard Greenspan has suggested language already, it may not happen in front of us. It sounds like we're all in agreement with regard to the concept, perhaps we agree on the concept moving forward with 30 days with full powers, followed by 60 days as interim town manager, and then come back the first week in December and ratify the agreement as drafted by Howard Greenspan.
So I asked to move the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is a 30-day full appointment as town manager. That's it, period. 30 days, starting at the end of this term, which would be December 1st. Any further discussion? Here, any other amendments? Hearing none, all those are being defined by saying aye. I think we better do a roll call vote since they're appointing, so.
Counsel Ingman, yes. Counsel Calla, yes. Counsel Christopher, yes. Counsel O'Carroll, yes. Counsel Bajin, yes. Counsel Dovetta, yes. Press President Bancorp, yes. Press President Sampin, yes. Thank you.
Good night, Gabriel.
Thank you.
We need to be aware in December if we make a motion to include December 31st, because right now he won't be effective, so we can't say January 1st.
Anything else from the town manager?
No, that would include my report.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you for serving for us, Terry. You've done a tremendous job. I think this council, as well as the new council coming in, would be very proud of the work you've done to pull things together for us, so thank you.
You've got 90 days, I was going to get a time for Christmas. 30, it's not perfect.
He can still buy a truck.
All right, we're going to go, school department update. I did attend the school committee meeting, a couple of highlights, so to speak. There was a review with the superintendent by the school committee, which she came through with flying colors. There was also a resignation of one Dr. Kells from the school committee, she'll be moving out of town, we wish her the best of luck. And so we'll be appointing at, I think it's on Monday, November 27th, a combined meeting between the council and the school committee for that vacancy, so just to make everybody aware of that.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel.
I have a little concern on that. I know the school committee advertised and picked that date. The charter calls for 14-day posting on the town bulletin board. I'm not sure if the town, if they posted it.
There's several different provisions of the charter which covers vacancies, one particularly for the council president, one particularly for the councils that large council precincts, the other one for employees, which is 914, which requires that 14-day posting for employees. This one particularly is covered in the 5-1, I believe, of the charter as school committee specifically mentioned, which is no requirement of a posting. I did ask KMP before coming down to confirm my reading of that, they weren't in the office because it was late, so.
That's section 5.1.
Yeah, 5.1 says elected town offices, unless the school committee, and 914 says, I didn't print my paper card because it's hard to work on. Whenever vacancies about to occur in any town office, town employment, so I think it puts in both. I think we had this discussion before on, I just wasn't happy with the way the position was posted and advertised. It was just kind of-
Well, we can raise that concern with the chairman of the school committee as well as town council, and if there is some concern about that or a change, we will have to make that before that Monday date.
Just looking quickly, section 5-1 seems to be pretty clear about the vacancy in the school committee.
Well, 914, kind of-
It doesn't have a time. I think it kind of looks like it overrides it as part of the 914.
Whenever vacancy occurs or as votes occur in any town office or town employment, the 22th authority shall forward, cause public notice, such vacancy or pending vacancy to be posted on town bulletin board for a period of not less than 14 days.
In chapter, article nine is general provisions. General provisions will usually cover everything that's not covered in a specific provision, where 5-1 is a specific provision of the school committee. That's the reason I interpreted it to have the 14-day requirement. Brian Rayly, who has been given a C P sign charter, will be in in the morning and will actually confirm it following.
Okay, so we have, we can have that clarified.
I agree it needs to be 14 days. But I also would like to bring up another issue, because we're appointing this person to the school committee, there may be another vacancy on the school committee, and I'm sure that's-
By the way.
After January 1st, is there this rush need to appoint someone before the new council is put in, when we could just wait till the January meeting and appoint two people if things hold up the way they are? And we may get more interest in the position. As far as I know, I've only seen one person, which I got a resume from today, that's seeking a position. Maybe if we posted the 14 days and we waited till January to appoint these people, we'd be appointing two, and we might have a little more interest.
Yeah, I think we've had five that requires, yeah.
I've only seen one.
So, yeah, so we have six. And there was a request by the chairman of the school committee to have it on that day. Counsel O'Carroll.
I agree, I do think it's important to do it before the end of the year. I think you're going to have a chairman of the school committee elected prior to the other vacancy being filled, and I think it's important that you have at least six people there trying to decide on who the chairperson should be, so I do think it's kind of important. And I think the school committee's been talking about this for a while, and like we say, we do have, and I think it's been forwarded to everybody in the council, I thought, that there are, you know, six applicants, six people have put in a request for the position.
Maybe this is a question for a lawyer, but would we be able to make a prospective, to name someone prospectively if we were to find out that the one member of the school committee was not going to be serving in the next term? So if we were to make a vote, let's say this next one, and we were, and Mr. Vecchia was the person who gets the town council president position, would we have the power to then say, we're going to make another appointment based off of that information? Or will we have to do it one at a time?
It's when the resignation hits the clerk's office, so, you know, you can't prospectively do it. It's a procedurally matter that once the clerk receives notice, he has to make notice to the council president and the chair of the school committee, at which time the chair of the council president controls the agenda and the meeting times of those joint meetings.
So barring anything going forward, I'd keep the meetings at this point, unless legal counsel advises otherwise, for the 27th, with the considerations of the five or six applicants. And then come January 1, if Ron happens to be the person, the president-elect making transition to the council, that would be up to the new council as well as the new school committee to make that appointment, to answer your question. Counsel resign sooner. Well, let's see, we'll chat about six years ago, someone, a member resigned sooner for another appointment, but that's a personal-
Yes, I remember that.
Okay, so we're going to keep that date. Thank you, Counselor. Where are we here now?
Old business?
Old business, thank you. Winter School, middle school site rezoning recommendation from the planning board, actually. That has been continued. We're hoping to hear something from them within the next couple of weeks. I did have a conversation, I did, I think town manager did, or maybe some, one of the other councils, relative to moving that forward, so we're hopeful they will bring a recommendation to us at our December 18th meeting. Street parking change penalty code fee, Phil, I think you spoke to that.
We were passed.
Yeah, so that's all set. Parking committee, that's to be continued, we're still going to put that together, I know Counsel Christopher is working on that as we go forward. It's going to be a busy month with the holidays, so on and so forth, so I'm sure that'll happen soon. New business, we have a motion submitted by the town manager. The town council motions that the town maintains a uniform tax rate for all classes of property for fiscal year 2018 and authorize the town manager, Terrence Delahanty, to sign and electronically submit the LA 5 to the Department of Revenue. So that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Made by the town manager?
Made by the town manager, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? It wasn't a very enthusiastic.
Do we need a roll call to set the tax rate?
We do.
Yes, we do.
For uniform tax rate.
Denise?
We're not setting the rate.
No, we said-
We just maintain it.
We maintain it. And this is an annual state statute.
This has to have a public hearing. So it has to be a public hearing on this. So it has to be referred in a public hearing, or December 5th.
We don't have to refer, we can just schedule a hearing.
Schedule a hearing.
Just schedule a hearing.
Just a public hearing.
Just schedule a hearing, December 5th. Do you still want to vote on that? A roll call on that?
No, we don't. We can just refer that. Yeah.
Good catch, Denise.
Thank you. That's why Denise is here.
She makes the big bucks.
That's right. Uh, next, town council allow the school department to enter into a five-year lease agreement.
It's, uh, coming from the superintendent of schools' request. Uh, certainly saves the school money from a three-year lease to a five, about $7,000 and some speculate.
Mr. President, want me to make the motion, read it, make it?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. The town council allow the school department to enter into a five-year lease agreement with Ford Motor Company Inc. for the purpose of leasing a van, transport students requiring specialized transportation to and from school and school-related activity to take any other action thereto.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President? I just want to put it on, um, under the charter and some other provisions.
Yeah.
Any of these leases that are over, oh, five years are over, have to be approved by the council. This is for three years?
Yeah.
I knew it was a...
But they also have to be approved by a two-thirds vote. So we should have to, uh, a roll call to make sure we have one-third.
Get the information on the lease. When does the lease take place? Does the lease take place this year or is it Monday?
No, it's already, we, we, we already wanted it to take place about nine weeks ago. Some, uh, students and their parents have been on, um, kind of shot, shot-handedly been handled on transportation. We're doing private vendors with them.
Which costs us a lot.
So this was, uh, will, will help us. This lease will take effect immediately upon passing and certification of the minutes.
Counsel, is this lease in their budget right now? The cost of this lease?
I don't...
Does they have a line item in the budget now?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, this is something that is already in the school budget. This is a procedural motion. They're not asking for a funding. It's, it's a line that has consistently been in the school budget. It's just because of a recent change in state law requiring all leases over three years get approved. So it's just the authorization to enter into a lease that they're requesting. They have the funding for it. It, a vehicle's been identified, the procurement's been followed. It's just the authorization that they need.
Okay, any other discussion? So they're not in possession of this vehicle now?
Correct.
Yeah, Denise?
Counsel Raymond, yes. Counsel Cala, yes. Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Excuse me, yes.
Counsel Wayagen? Counsel Barone?
Yes.
Counsel Davento?
Yep.
Vice President Boncori?
Yes.
President Sanford?
Yes.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, we also have a motion, uh, move that the town council vote to transfer $498,101.20 from free cash to capital stabilization fund in accordance with the town council policy or take any action thereto.
Motion to refer to finance?
Motion to refer to finance, finance, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Next item is a motion to move that the town council vote to transfer $373,575.90 from free cash to the general stabilization fund in accordance with the town council policy or take any other action thereto.
Motion to refer.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Third item, uh, is a motion, uh, I move that the town council vote to transfer $99,137.15 from free cash to the building stabilization fund in accordance with the town council policy or take any other action thereto.
Motion to refer.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Next motion is that I move the town council vote to transfer $5,000 from the town council reserves to the town manager general office supplies for purposes of funding the town employee appreciation function or take any other action thereto.
Second.
I like the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Any discussion on this, first of all? If not, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to move the town council vote to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year from W.B. Mason outstanding invoices to be paid from current year harbor master waterways department budgets as noted below or take any other action thereto. The amount is for $255.31.
Motion.
Motion's been made. Second? Second, and all in favor?
Right.
On unpaid bills, we have to, um, to voice for that.
Okay, submitted by town manager.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On the, on the unpaid, any voices?
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, go on, Counsel.
We need a roll call?
Yeah.
Counsel Cala, yes. Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Terry?
Yes.
Counsel Wayagen? Counsel Barone?
Yes.
Counsel Davento?
Yep.
Vice President Boncori?
Yep.
President Sanford?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, it's a motion from the, uh, from the town manager. A motion reads, "I move that the town council declare as surplus the following vehicle inventory", and everybody should have that copy of that list, uh, before them, thereby taking account of treasury collected to post a sale through the approval of auction site or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Any motion?
Need a new motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask the, um, council clerk to do me a huge favor? And that would be to schedule a meeting, the finance committee, about the items that were referred at 6:30 before our next meeting. Will I advertise all items of the 25 item?
Yep.
Thank you. The requests were made and accepted.
Yes.
Thank you. The next motion, I'll let Counsel Cala read it and we can...
Uh, motion that the town council establish a public safety building committee to study the feasibility and location of a public safety building slash complex to include any public or private parcels within the town of Winthrop or take any other action thereto.
I'll second the motion as a member of public safety committee.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Discussion?
Is this to, to refer the matter to the public safety committee or to...
To appoint a committee.
How will the, how will the committee be composed?
Yeah, should that go to committee or committees?
I, I think it...
Yeah, Counsel, we had some discussion. Want to just elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, um, the thought was that, uh, you know, a similar committee that was appointed for the feasibility, for the middle school site. So I think that has maybe seven members. So something...
This is something we'd like to establish tonight or going forward?
Well, I'd like to, to put it out there so that we can...
Mr. Chairman, are we asking for applications?
For applications, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That, that could be reviewed and...
So it consists of seven, seven people?
Yeah, I, I think that's what the, uh, the middle school site is. I think it's seven, seven members. Thank, who's on that, Jim?
It is.
Seven.
Yeah, there is seven, yeah. And, and again, you know, we had some discussion whether we're duplicating our efforts. This particular committee, uh, would not necessarily be looking at one particular parcel of land. They'd be looking at many opportunities, uh, for public safety building, not excluding the middle school site. Uh, you know, we discussed whether it should be consolidated. Uh, I, I feel at this point that the committee that's looking at the rezoning of the middle school, uh, has their charge, uh, relative to the, a community center and reuse of that parcel. Uh, and I'd like to keep them on, on that, that focus. Uh, I know there's a need in talking to the chief, both chiefs, I'll call you chief right now, um, as well as a lot of interested, uh, community folks who, uh, know and need, know we need, uh, public safety building, uh, again, whether it's on that site or another. But I, I think both of these committees can run parallel. I think it's not gonna be on my watch, but I'm hoping that both come in with proposals at some point in time and consideration and financing to the next council, who will have to make the decision on whether they want to put a, put a public safety building, uh, at the middle school site or any other site that might be available in Winthrop, as well as the middle school rezoning or reuse committee bringing a proposal to the new council and being able to make a decision based on two proposals, uh, with some validity. And I think that would work the best for the next council as well as the community going forward. Um, yes, Counsel.
So an RFQ has been sent out and, and has, and I would like the chief to...
An addendum has gone out with no specific location on it, but to do, uh, an assessment of the two facilities, um, based on our size now with a tiny bit of growth, where accountant has, he wished, three of them, so bumped the cops up a little bit. But no, we, based on our needs for apparatus, uh, we provided them with the study that we done in 1993. At that time, the fight upon needed 28,000 square feet, but the two buildings, and then we'll know how much space we actually need.
Right.
Uh, when the, the folks, the architects come in from the RFQ for the first day to respond, we were able to walk them through our buildings. And one of the biggest things facing, at least in my building, they did walk through the police station as well, is that out-of-town apparatus. We buy our apparatus to fit.
Right.
Anytime we call an outside community, they have to leave their apparatus out. Works out in the summer, it doesn't work out in the winter. And to, to raise, to do, you know, we have high beams, to raise the, the apparatus floor, you have to raise the second floor in the firehouse. And based on the pitches I gave you with the basement, you have to raise the second floor. The feasibility we got for our buildings, including the police station, those aren't viable buildings. But the addendums out to come up with feasibility of what we need as a combined public safety building.
So go, go on, Counsel.
Does the RFQ allow the town the flexibility to consider two separate, um, buildings, one for police and one for fire, as well as a combined facility? Just so that we have the maximum flexibility of...
Well, what this will bring, I mean, and again, when we only have, you know, few dollars to go out, you can't say, "Well, we'd like you to give us a quote on remodeling three, relocating two." I mean, his building might be, the chief's building might be a little more viable or a lot more viable than ours are, but with it, we're gonna find the needs of each department.
Right.
So if they were 30,000 apiece, that's 60,000 combined, or where do you take, you know, if he is gonna get out of his building, um, where do you go for two 30,000 square foot sites without massive land taking?
Right.
So we could get to that point. But for the dollars right now that we're out on the street with, we can't be asking too much.
Right, right, Counsel.
So is the RFQ, what's, I, I, forgive me, I just asked Joe for the, for the RFQ today.
Yeah, he doesn't even have the addendum yet.
Okay.
What we had is do, based on the architects that came, I mean, and we, um, basically prodded them, "Hey, you're here today, let's make a week of wild", but they went on an hour and a half tour of all our buildings.
Right.
Quite thorough. We had to narrow the scope down. You're asking a lot. You want us to do the feasibility of your buildings, which has been done several times.
Right.
And you want us to look at a public safety building. So what we've done now, the addendum that went out today, I'll make sure Joe gets that till you have it, narrowed the scope way down. What does a public safety need, both fire and police side? And okay, now if you're gonna look for a site, this is what you need.
Counsel, ready?
Okay, so, so the RFQ is to assess what the needs are?
Correct.
And then identify potential sites for new buildings?
That it would fit, and if, you know, some, everybody has sites, you know? If it was gonna just be a firehouse, we have four or five sites. But when you come down with square footage, NFP, all the other things that go into a public safety building, you would be able to identify a site. Well, the only site that's really available right now that would work conceivably could be the middle school.
So, so I just want to make sure in the RFQ then that if we would have the flexibility to, to consider two sites as, if, if we needed to, as well as...
Right, that flexibility, yeah.
Okay.
Although it does not say that for me.
Counsel President?
I think it could take...
We're not gonna run afoul of the...
Counsel Barone? In this RFQ, did you also include an ambulance service or...
Well, what's gonna happen is if you go to architectural design and, you know, they will figure square footage for that, only because future long range, we're not figuring to get us through the next year, hopefully the next hundred years. Fire service will be running the ambulance, but we would be looking to take in the ambulance to have one base of two ambulances stacked with a small living quarters for them, yes.
So that was included, thank you. Yeah, Counsel Terry?
What's the length of time for the RFQ to come back?
Everything we adjusted today, when we put the addendum out today, I think June 7th, uh, June 11th, we changed it to, uh, December, I'm sorry. December 11th, everything's gonna be back.
Everything's gonna be back and then it'll be, you know, select the company to do the RFQ, but, and what's the timeframe on that, do you think?
Well, because of the way we've narrowed the scope of the addendum, I don't think it's gonna be, you know, I would say it would be a few months, for sure.
So I guess my question compound off that would be, this committee really can't do one for, until we get some information back. I think it's a needed committee, this, that. The other thing, I, you know, I would either rather use my council privilege to wait until the first meeting in December, at least to know the composition, not who, but are we gonna have a counselor from the public safety? We're gonna have, obviously, a chief, or two chiefs, or how many, a lot, you know what I mean? I'd like to know the composition of the committee before we vote in it. And I was concerned to put it off, but now this committee's not gonna really have a lot to do for a couple of months. So I would like to use my council privilege just to put it off for, until the first meeting in December, and, and hopefully we just have some sort of, you know, numbers, size and composition of the committee.
And Counsel, just so you go forward, you know, I've taken calls from my group. We're not calling it a competition. I mean, the last, it's basically, we're doing it out of knee, trying to get across to the community is that the services that government deliver, public safety education, delivering a potable water and things like that, and our building will fail. They are, they're borderline failing now.
Right.
So that's all.
So it's supposed to last not 110 years?
128.
128?
Force buggies and steam engines and going forward. Counsel Cala, I think what we'll do, Counsel Terry's taking his council privilege, but we get the information out, anybody's interested, and hopefully with an expertise for this type of a committee, will, will apply, and then we can make those appointments, either the first or the second, uh, meeting in December. And again, I, I just want to make it perfectly clear again, that I don't want these committees And again, I, I just want to make it perfectly clear again, that I don't want these committees to think that they're in competition, absolutely not. I want them both to bring to the next council their best proposal, and to the community, and then they can make a decision, the council can make a decision based on that information. I think we've got some fine people on the other committee, and I'm sure we'll have some great folks on this, on this committee also, so thank you. Next on our agenda, our appointments, I believe I have two unless Denise tells me I'm missing one. We have three, I have two here, so I'll start with these two, or whatever one I'm missing can help me with. From myself and Council President, a motion that the town council accept the appointment made by the town council president, Russ Sanford, to appoint James Gallagher Jr. as a temporary registrar on the board of registrar, to take any, and to take any action there too.
Make the motion to accept Council President's appointment.
Second.
Any second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Needs to help out in the recount coming up in the next week or two. And I want to thank Marie Nguyen, who has been registrar, she's still serving, due to a scheduling conflict, she was not able to make this particular recount, but she will be serving the rest of her term, I believe, until June. Next is a motion that the town council accept the appointment made by Council President Sanford to appoint William Galt to the Citizens Advisory Committee on Finance, to take any other action there too.
Motion to accept the Council President's appointment of William Galt.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Denise, who am I missing?
To appoint Elisa Hup Brendan to Winter Cultural Council.
Okay, thank you. Motion that the town council accept the appointment made by the town council president Sanford to appoint Elisa Hup Brennan, Brennistan, Brennistan?
Brendan.
Brendan, Brendan, thank you. And I do have my glasses, Council. To the Winter Cultural Council, to take any other action there too.
Motion to approve the appointment of Council President Sanford to appoint Elisa Hup Brendan.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, thank you.
Mr. President, just under appointments, sort of raise an issue that has been identified, and certainly the appointment of your clerk, and duties and responsibilities of your clerk, I think we should look at and examine bringing all committees under your clerk, and trying to, to make room in the budget, reworking the budget if we have to, that currently exists, to bring her into an independent position to supervise all these committees, to ensure that they're getting their minutes posted, their agendas opposed at their family with the public records laws, since it's complicated, and these committees are volunteering their time and don't have daytime hours to go. So certainly your clerk is under your jurisdiction, I would urge that we examine this, that we look at it, come up with a, a job description, and reconsider classifying that position.
Absolutely, we've had a little bit of that discussion. Denise, you do a wonderful job for us, and due to the open meeting laws and the recording considerations, it just makes sense. We've got a lot of legalities to go with the planning board, you know, advisory board, so on and so forth, Court of Appeals, Denise does a wonderful job with, the ones that she's on. There is a lack of clerical consideration minutes, so I'd like to see that happen going forward, so, when we put something together, and hopefully we can adopt it with this council going forward. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just, I just wanted to, I don't know if it requires a motion or not, but the presentation that was given to us by Mr. Vitaglione earlier, I wanted to see if we could put that onto the, onto the town website. It's, I'm just asking, I don't know if I need a motion.
We certainly can do that, we'll put it on the Southern Business District tab, if appropriate.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. John, can you email it to the...
Public comment? Just our old friend John McZero, this weekend I went to the play at the Winter School, and he left that place dramatic, I'll tell you. I went to a rock of ages, the venue was great, the school was great.
It was fantastic.
It was unbelievable, and kudos to everybody in the school.
Oh, nice.
Thought I was going to talk about firehouses.
Just don't forget the C-BY-BY party coming up, I think it's next week, so we expect to see you there too.
I'd have the eyes.
Johnson?
Mr. President, thank you, Tony Marahad, a couple of big things. I appreciate your wonderful comment at the beginning of the meeting tonight, acknowledging the great role of Tony Marahad, and having the, if one has a committee. I know talking about that, because back in nineteen seventy-one, I was appointed by the town as the first chairman of that committee, along with another member called Phil Buck Corey. So you know, and I thought we did it a while over the course of thirty years.
Absolutely.
And making sure that the centers of the town were deserved from the wild interest of Matt Port at the time. And what I would like to request, if I might, is that the town acknowledged Tony Marahad's real contributions, because he was a truly dedicated public servant, a public servant who stood with personal issues, not political or so forth, without complaining and so forth. If we could think, if the county could think something appropriate to acknowledge that made a contribution, I'd just like to make that recommendation.
We'll work on that, yeah.
And also just one, one brief thing, with respect to the infrastructure question that the chief brought up a little ago, my recommendation would be for the infrastructure is to go ahead with that, under the design constraint, assuming that the current street sidewalk configuration in the town will be being placed, at least for the moment, you know, it's not here at the time, it's going to be changed at some point in the near future due to input from the legitimate broad-based political input, or public input process, fine, but don't hold off the infrastructure, you know, because of a lack of precedent right now, or universal, you know, and it's going to change in the future, that would be my recommendation. I've been involved with these kind of things in the past, and it's actually worked out well. So just to get the infrastructure going, but with that constraint in mind, just assume that the current street sidewalk configuration will be being placed while you're doing, while the town is doing the infrastructure.
Thank you.
And then if any minor changes come up, you know, like a minor street change here or a bump out there, that can only be done with absolutely minor costs, and it isn't. Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other, next to you.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to make sure that the council understands, this document that was handed tonight, the presentation, is going to be the definitive, definitive document for residents of town Woodrop. This has never been done before in the history of Woodrop. And I want to just go over just quickly, that that document there covers scale, density, traffic, parking, after effects, if the document goes through, it covers inclement weather conditions and emergencies, it covers the zoning, it covers health and environmental issues. It's all in there. I want to congratulate the twelve residents that worked on this, they put a lot of time in, they interviewed over a hundred residents, and you can see the pictures, it's done in a professional way, and I hope you all take your time to really read through it, because I think it's an impact document that really gives the residents some leavenship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll go precinct six. First off, I just wanted to address the vote for school committee that's coming up on the twenty-seventh. We just had an election in this town, and the people who are going to serve on the school committee are not going to be taking office yet. So I think, you know, Serto was just elected, Nick LaConti was just elected, Jennifer Powell was just elected, James Fabiano was just elected. I think these people are the people who deserve to vote on who is going to serve on their committee. And that's all I had to say on that, is I think, I think we should wait for the new committees to take effect on this vote, because those are the people they're going to be working with. And then one more thing, if I could, Chief, as far as the parking concerns go, there are some timed parking spaces over on Hagman Road that were, were there any studies done on those to determine the effects of the one-hour or two-hour parking spaces?
Yeah, well, I can tell you the effects of the Southern Business District in general doesn't require enforcement at this point of those parking spots. That's why we have a parking committee to examine use and volume, and to have our enforcement coincide with use and volume, instead of just having these blanketed spots that we say this is the ordinance, and it's forty, fifty years old. So part of the overall look, you know, we did give out warnings down there to, to see what was going on, and we have a parking management problem, as Julia said earlier. But what is the right parking program for us? We have to get...
Do we know what percentage of people park for, like, what amount of time, like, a year or a half?
I can see on Hagman Road, prior to the study we did, about a week's worth of study, it was fifty-fifty of business owners versus pedestrians that were parked down here, and business owners obviously were parked there longer than, than customers, right? So we looked at that, we, you know, we had, we had a lot of anxiety, I guess, when I was going around talking to business owners in the center with Joe and my intern, and we sat down with ten, ten or eleven of them, even the ones that weren't affected were affected. And they were affected by the stress of the whole pilot, even if their business wasn't affected. So we got that message. We need to take a look at the parking, and we were obligated to, and we're going to. Again, Mr. Christopher is going to help us with that, and get some people connected that are affected the most to have some, some input in that process.
Yeah, the only, the only reason I ask about those numbers specifically is because Julia was talking about people going down there and going to hair salons, and going to other places, and keeping them down center, and it seemed restricted to me to have a time limit, because I know for a fact, my wife, when she gets her hair done, she's gone for an hour and a half, two hours, she's done, and, you know, and if she's rushing out to get to her car to get out of the center, you know, that, that could stop her from maybe going blackstrap and having that. That's the only reason I break out.
They were better meeting than me. My mother, she had one guy in two hours. Thank you for your input, thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, Mr. Murray, precinct six. More directed at the chief, if that's okay? These were great, showed us where it's extremely busy, what it's not. You have the numbers, what I would like to see, this is, this is what we have now, but a lot of the discussion tonight, and the ongoing discussion is where we're going. So what I would like to see is, if you have the data, we know Thursday, Friday, and Saturday are the busiest days, Sunday to Tuesday, nothing, Wednesday ends up a little bit, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, busiest days. What does twenty units, twenty cars, make this look like? What does forty cars make this look like? Because that really doesn't matter what it looks like now. I passed out a flyer from Chelsea that, what they did is they kind of, I think they did it backwards, they built it, and then they realized later, oh, maybe we shouldn't have been so lenient with the parking. So I guess if you have this data, and you can just plug in...
We have, we have that data, what we don't have is what's going in those places, right? Or even a proposal.
But even if you, we know we're going to build something, so what would twenty more cars look like, even just evenly spread? What would forty more cars, just to give us something to, to look at? Because if we know it's coming, even though we don't know, you see some of the master plan, and what people say could be anywhere from ten units to a hundred units scattered throughout. What does this map turn into be if you do thirty units? Where's thirty?
You certainly could work with developers early on, pre-application, to find out what they're looking to do, and how many, how many units that would be, and take a reasonable calculation on each unit, and plug them in, and let, and see what it does.
Well, just so you know your saturation, you know, right now, we don't know what the saturation is. Yellow is where we want to be, and that's what I heard from Ms. Walls. If you plug in forty cars and the whole thing turns yellow, that's where we are, that's where we need to be. So when someone comes and says we're going to build eighty units, you got a problem.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm not a parking expert, but I work with Julia to try to get that. But I also urge you to read the parking reports, and look at the master DOD data attached to that report, because I made the same assumptions you did, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, disease times in the center, and I think Wednesday had the most volume on, on certain streets down there. So I, I made the same assumptions going into this, and I was doing the report, looking at the data, it didn't really ferret out. So it's an interesting learning experience for me doing these reports as well. But certainly, I think it lines up with Julia's report, and we should make sure the traveling traffic lines up with the parking traffic, and see what high volume data.
And put a bench...
No problem.
Thank you, John. Yes, John?
Thank you. Johnny, precinct one, if you can't hear me, I can put out, say something, and I'll speak up. I want to wear former council president Riley, and thank all of you that are leaving the council, especially my counselor, Councilor Haron.
Thank you.
I'm going to speak, not to the future, but to the parking study that was presented I think, and just to reference to what the chief said, we, this identified some problems out of the study that we need to work on as a town, I believe. I think we need to put Hagman Road behind us, and look to the future, and how we're going to deal with. I think the single biggest parking problem that came out of this is the eighty-nine spaces, which make up two-thirds of our public parking, and how to connect that, or do we want it connected? I'd say we do have to for certain occasions, and how do we make the passing, the pathways more understandable? And it's, as Julia said, you can do signs, but we've got to look at our spreads, see our accesses that are there, and use, as we redesign, visual cues, like dates and whatever that's been discussed. Also, I think clearly we need to, there is a lot of north-south access to the square, very limited east-west, only Jefferson comes in and begins that connection. We have a pathway, if we'll define it, that will connect Butmann Street to Woodside Avenue, and I think that is something this study has shown us needs to be done. I just caution, I don't want to talk about the design of the square, but the, that, as it is now, the square organizes traffic, it organizes the buildings to the south and to the north, and it's the one piece in the whole square which is visually somewhat jarring because of the different periods that the buildings are built. It gives what designers would call meaning and orbit, and orientation that begins to make it a whole. But the parking, and all the data you've gotten, only tells us what people are doing, not why they're doing it. And I think there have been a couple hints that are going to shorten me up already tonight. People park, and this is a little bit of a controversial thought, if you go to the mall, you go anywhere, you're going to park as close as you can to where you're going to go. We also need to remember that in our town, our average age is old, it's forty-two. Eighteen percent of our population is over sixty-five. They're not going to be running anyplace very fast, and we've got to consider this. When we look at the data that you saw, and look closely at what you have, you'll see clearly that what we have is, the intensity of our parking varies during the year, it doesn't show there. It varies by the day, and it actually varies by the hour, by how people are using the center at that time. We have the example of Bartlett Road on Thursday, Fridays, and Saturday morning, when people are doing their financial transactions. The center on the south side is reasonably, it doesn't get to that desirable seventy-five percent until at night, when the residents are beginning, or when residents in other towns, people are coming here to eat, you see a pickup at night over in, along Butmann Street, and in the Hagman Road, adjacent to the Tas Bar. And if you look at it as a whole, as I'm just giving you a short look at it, it's not the spaces that are there, it's the spaces that people want to use. With that in mind, if you look at the parking, and it's been fundamentally, as Mr. Schreiber said, at one point, why regulate it if you don't have to? On as little regulation as necessary. There is some regulation that will be necessary, I don't want to talk about that. But I will say, as it is, it's completely self-regulating, with no parking enforcement, almost no regulations, because you can't enforce it. And if you take, for instance, the restaurants on a Friday, Saturday, Thursday night, on the south side of Woodside, you see them park along Woods, along Woodside, you see it turning the corner and bearing, they're going down to the municipal lot on Hagman Road, and they're going up Hagman, and then all of a sudden you get the spill over, and moves that way. In the morning, it moves an entirely different way. The depot traffic, the book depot, doesn't show, because they open earlier, some of the earlier doesn't show there, because people are going for their early morning coffee, stopping in before they go to work. But later in the morning, it begins to shift, to shift to, I just blanked on it, Cafe Delight and the Center Cafe. So you see it's moving, but every time as they fill up, get red, when it was near capacity on Woodside in the morning, people that are going to those destinations, and the insurance companies and other things, they're going around parking on Hagman Road, they're going into the light, sometimes over to Butmann. So what you, what you have here is a moving target that somewhat has regulated itself very successfully for a number of years. What we, the best example of what happens, which impacts the lots across the street, was when they had the festival there. I, I would estimate five hundred to eight hundred people at any time, you couldn't get a spot on any street in the center, or any space in the center. You saw it flow across the street, fill the rink, fill Walling Street, and go down Hagman Road beyond the tennis courts. That showed you the capacity, the capacity, that's our maximum capacity, that's the capacity we've got to be able to meet if we're going to have events, program the center, and have a number of events there, which to me is the one reason to redesign the center from what it is right now, to take advantage of new uses that take up, Tuesday told us, that festival was one, we're seeing it with the market. Our goal here is to make a place for destination shopping, and then to accommodate all the uses that we want to get in there, to get people to come, and get people to use the businesses, and that was clear on the festival, every restaurant did terrific, every business did terrific. The only ones that survived were maybe some lawyers, or some insurance agents.
The lawyers can afford it.
And let me wrap this up.
Yeah.
I think we need to keep our eye on the ball. Right now, there's a future that's coming, but that future, whether it happens or not, that center's going to be there, it needs to be there, and it needs, as we have our four or five other shopping areas that we need to pay attention to in this town, and I think it's our obligation to come together as a community, recognize the terrific town we have, and work together to come up with methods, with the methods to build on what we have to a better community, and deal with projects like this in a really mature and diplomatic way. I thank you very much.
Thank you, John, appreciate it. You can.
Thank you.
You need, want to say something?
Yeah, because John wrote...